And get you out safely. First up, we have the Board of Education meeting minutes of February 5th. If I can get a motion to approve.
Motion's out.
Bill and a second?
Second.
Jen, all in favor? That is everyone. There's also an FYI on some budget transfers. We also have some warrants that need to be certified for 21418. If I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Barry and Xavier, all in favor? That is everyone. Onto board member communications and now since anything anyone would like to share. There's a lot of stuff coming up. Yes, maybe? Okay. So Hefy's coming up on March 15th, correct?
That's correct.
March 15th. Also, there's the Tri-COIA. We're one of our very own Xavier Palacios is being honored.
Yes.
By them. That is on March 22nd, if I'm not mistaken. What am I missing?
I'm looking right now.
Oh, the Finley Honors Concert. Oh, sorry, there.
That's okay, go ahead.
Finley Honors Concert is Thursday, March 8th.
And on March 15th, I'm going to be attending a mental health summit in Cyosset. So I'm looking forward to bringing back some information about that afterwards.
Excellent.
And I was lucky to attend the Finley Drama Club production of Mulan Junior.
Well, how was it?
It was fantastic. They did an awesome job. It was a very fun night. I only, I saw it once, but my daughter went both nights, so I guess it was worth it.
One more thing. Not that I had any kids there, but I know that our marching band, contingency of our marching band just got back from a Disney trip over the break and they paraded down Main Street. So congratulations to the marching band.
Go band.
And I would, I want to backtrack a little bit because I did mention Hefy and then, of course, forgot to mention one of the honorees in the room tonight, Mr. Jared Stein.
Okay factor.
Okay factor is Friday night, yep. Okay. And the floor is yours, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, there is obviously, we are coming off another group of Regents meetings and discussions. The last set of meetings was the second week in February and focus was, a lot of focus on teacher evaluations and the currently existing moratorium and where that's going to go from here. And the argument at this point really centers upon whether or not it's appropriate to kick the can, not on our part, but at the state level, to kick the can down the road and extend the moratorium or find a way to simply repeal the law and move the responsibility for evaluations back to the local level, which is obviously preferable because most of us would probably agree that it wasn't broken before this whole process entered the picture. Unfortunately, in that, the law is not a state education department construct. I don't believe that the state government is in a position right now where they, where they actually believe repealing the law is an option. So more to follow on that and we'll be watching it very carefully. Also, came up a couple of weeks ago, I participated in my first gathering of the Regional Diversity and Equity Initiative Advisory Council, made up of a number of administrators at the secondary level as well as at the post-secondary level and a number of other, I'm going to say organization, community organization representatives, looking at hiring processes and trying to brainstorm ways, and it's going to be, it's going to have to be a multi-tiered approach, but to diversify the teaching candidate pool. Right now, there is a teacher shortage, probably nationwide, but certainly in New York and particularly in certain certification areas. And that leads to a situation where it's very difficult to find quality candidates in general for certain positions. And you also want there to be, obviously, diversity amongst the candidate pool. And that is one of the things that we are looking to, as an advisory council, to improve on a multi-tiered brainstorming type level as the, as the days move forward.
That's one of our personal board goals as well.
It is, goal number nine. We will not forget anytime soon, goal number nine. But there's a lot of good people in this group with different ideas and different perspectives and different types of experiences. And I think if, if any group can start to put things together, there's a lot of interesting data shared, which I did share with the board, but just to look at the limitations of simply going out through OLS, you start to see the same things over and over again. We've got to extend our reach, as does every district on Long Island, as far as, as far as we're concerned. Two postcards went home recently, one kindergarten registration, those dates are out there. And we're also looking at for next year, Universal pre-kindergarten, looking at, at this point with grade four moving out of the, of the primary school buildings, potentially having two sections, morning and afternoon, at each one of the primaries. And in an ideal world, although it might not work out this way, having students attend the building that they would attend kindergarten in. We are also looking at the prospect of possibly having one of the buildings house an extended day program for a small, I say small, but a relatively inexpensive situation for families who are interested. And we're trying to gather that, that interest through the forum online. If there is enough interest, we may run that at one particular building, which would sort of skew the, the attendance zones. But it, it is going to generate a response and we're pleased that this is progressing to the next level. For those that have not experienced this before, we did not have UPK in district prior to this year. We are running it three buildings this year and we're looking to expand it next year. Let's see, we have, I don't think this was mentioned, but the valedictorian, salutatorian at the high school have been named. So congratulations to Aiden Forbes, the valedictorian, and Sebastian Stamatos, the salutatorian. And Aiden was also named a National Merit Scholarship finalist, which is really the granddaddy of scholarships, as far as scholarships go. Did anybody mention National History Day?
No, I was just gonna say.
Once again, Huntington has set the standard for National History Day participation and the quality of the work that has been done at both the middle school and high school. We are regarded nationwide as one of the, the schools to be reckoned with. Us in Suffolk and Hericks, I believe, in Nassau County, we produce volumes of phenomenal projects and student work that has, that really has stood out amongst the work that's done for this competition. So congratulations to all involved in this. Shows, I think we mentioned the Woodhull Beauty and the Beast Show, Mulan Ju, Mulan Junior was equally as fantastic. And I do want to give a plug to Cinderella at the high school, March 23rd and 24th. It's sure to be a, a show not to be missed. And I think the only other thing I have here that wasn't mentioned, and forgive me if it was, the PTA is hosting a Huntington Community Day at Citi Field on April 15th. More to follow there, but I believe the, the forums are already available online. We had a great turnout last year, I believe it was over the summer. This is a weekend in April. Let's turn out again. I attempted to make my plug for Yankee Stadium, they have not been able to accommodate. I see that, don't, don't do that. But it's, it would be a great, a great time for all to have as many, as many people present representing Huntington. It was a great time on the field last year. I know it's going to, going to work a little bit differently, but let's come out and support and represent.
Awesome.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks to our first public commentary of the evening. Just to go over the guidelines real quickly. Public commentary is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each during public commentary. The first portion of public commentary is anything on the items for action or discussion. After that, those speakers are done, then the floor will be open for the remaining time for any other topics. You must be a resident of the district. You must state your name as well as your affiliation. And if anyone would like to come to the microphone, they may do so now.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Nice job.
Moving on. First presentation of the evening, School Safety and Security.
Okay, just a little introduction here, and Mrs. Acker is going to start this. I don't think I have. Talking.
Ms. Acker.
I'm talking slow. Introduction, I don't believe I have to share with anyone in this room what we have recently heard, seen, and have been utterly disgusted with in terms of what happened in Parkland, Florida. And it has led to, I can't tell you how many conversations I've been engaged in over the past couple of weeks, not just with people in the Huntington community, but also with my colleagues from neighboring school districts and from across the state in terms of responses and where schools exist in terms of safety and security and the types of things that need to be discussed and should be concerns moving forward. The past week, obviously, we finalized a budget presentation, but we also thought it would be worthwhile to spend a couple of minutes just talking about some of the safety and security bullet points for Huntington and then, of course, some of the plans that we have for moving forward. And I'll, I'll add this, I know you're ready to go now. Any district that would say that they are well-prepared to deal with any and all contingencies that could occur would be just stating something that's not true. But I do believe that in this district, we are as actively thinking about things that can and may happen as any other district out there. And I think you've, you've got to be as many steps ahead as one can possibly be. And it's, it's just a shame that we have to be so intently focused on this, but, and you'll see this at the end of the presentation as well. We have great things going on in this district. We have programs that, that are models for other districts. We have the best staff that a district can ask for. We have kids that I wouldn't trade for the world. But the bottom line is none of it matters if safety and security is not a first and foremost priority. And on that note, I'm going to let you start it off.
So Mr. Polanski and I are going to do this together. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done or in the process of doing, because that question comes up quite often, what are you doing? What are you, you know, what are you planning? So I just wanted to fill everybody in on some of the things that we're doing. But I'll just start off with reminding everybody the types of safety plans that we have in place. Okay, so we have the district-wide safety plan that everybody is allowed to see. It's posted on our website. Once a year, the safety committee gets together and reviews the plan to ensure that it's up to date, make any changes we wanted to make. It's a pretty generic, it kind of conceptually lays out how the building plan should look. It's not going to contain personal information such as phone numbers or exactly how students or staff will perform during a specific type of incident, because obviously that's confidential and we want to make sure that we keep our students as safe as possible without putting that information out there. The district's safety plan is broken into four different components. It's the general consideration, basically how the plan gets constructed, who's part of constructing that plan, and then it's risk reduction and prevention. And I don't know if you want to add to this now, Jim, as far as our prevention, but it lists inside, on the district-wide plan, the types of programs we have in our schools to address our students with regard to social emotional needs, with regards to mental illness. So we do have multiple programs and they are listed, because that's a key piece to all of this is prevention. Do you want to talk about that more later? Okay. The next component of the plan is response. Heaven forbid something happens, how does the district respond? And it gives, in the district-wide, it kind of lists the resources that are available to us, whether it's in one building and we move resources to help cover, emergency medical resources, working with the county, working with the state. But in the building plans, it's exactly, it's more specific as to who we're calling and who's going to respond to us. So that's the third component of the district-wide plan. And then the fourth is, heaven forbid, recovery. So as you go through some kind of an incident, now we have to support the staff, the parents, the students who've gone through any type of an incident and make sure that the resources are there to support them. So the district plan, kind of high level, goes over those four components, but it's the building-level plans that are very detailed. Again, they cannot be public, but they are sent through the New York State portal. The principals enter in the data that's required. All New York State schools are required to provide the same information in a template. It automatically goes to the New York State Police Department. And then I send all of those building-level plans to our local police authorities, so they can see what the building plans are in cases, all, many different, inside the district plan, if you look on page nine, it lists all the different types of incidences that are covered in those building-level plans. So again, it's very confidential, but they're very comprehensive. And the reason why New York State is requiring us to use a template is that all the schools have common language. So if a school has an incident and it's called a lockdown, the police know exactly what they're dealing with and what types of resources to send. There was a time when people used code, code language, we have a code blue, we have a code Z or, and the responding, people did not know what it was referring to. So now in New York State, all their school districts have a common language. So when a response, an emergency response is initiated, the people helping us know exactly what type of response we're dealing with. So those are the safety plans. We have a district safety committee that's comprised of teachers, security, parents, board member, emergency response. We have our next meeting on March 13th and the Suffolk County Police will be there with us, again, reviewing our plan. The plans are always very dynamic. You always change in response to things. You learn through drilling. So what do we need to change in our plans? What do we need to add to our plan? So that's why you always have to review your plans and we will be doing a review on March 13th and we'll see, you know, how comprehensive our plan is. It's very comprehensive, but there's always room to add a little bit more. So that's the, the information about the safety plans that we have in the district. Technologies. So we have, I'm sure all of you know, we do have cameras in our buildings. We have been working really diligently with the high school administration as well as the security staff to replace some of the older cameras, give them stronger capabilities. And also, we've been working with a company called Intralogic in creating a software that really has given us capabilities that we've never had before. That has been implemented recently. Within the past few weeks, we've been doing that implementation, as well as, I'm not going to tell you where all the cameras are, but we have installed additional cameras to that building. And I'm going to skip down to the Smart Schools bond funding. That is the monies that we get from New York State for Smart Schools. We had $1.4 million to spend. We spent some of it on Chromebooks, but there is earmarked a chunk of that to do a district-wide camera project, meaning our, all of our schools will get additional cameras and they'll all be on the same software. They'll be able to pull up cameras on their smartphones, we'll be able to pull up any building at any time that we need to. So it's really going to be a comprehensive camera plan that we are going to put into place using the Smart Schools money. That was already in place. We did our bidding last year. So we've already, again, we partnered with Intralogic, who will be doing this work with us. And the digital entryway access, as all of you know, that come to our buildings, in order to gain access, you either need to be buzzed in or the employees do have a card swipe capability. So that's what we're referring to, the digital entryway access that we have in our schools right now. Wait, let me, I don't know how to pause this. Okay, I'm going to show you this little clip here and then I'll talk more about it. This is a pilot that we're doing with, except the sound is not there. Matt, you up there? No? No? Zach, can you put it back where I had it?
Pull that plug.
Pull, pull the plug.
Pull the plug.
There it is.
Can you do one of these?
Sound.
No. I had it coming through these, but.
There's something playing at a very low volume.
All right, here we go.
Yeah, it's trying to make sound out, but we have no way to test it. It was working.
Yeah, it worked through these monitors. But now I don't know how to. It was working through the blue too, but we're back off something. So. Yeah, it's just. No, but that's why I set this up here, put it down. It's muted. They just muted it, so it starts. Kathy.
Is it still muted?
That was my biggest concern. They're going to fix it and it's muted.
Should just move one of those mics over there.
Is this working? Yeah. Okay, folks. All right, we apologize for this technical, um, is this working? Okay, this is a technical issue. It was a nice clip, thank you, that Fox News came in and interviewed Mr. Polanski last Wednesday to show some software that we are piloting with Intralogic. And it talks about pull stations and the way that we have our cameras. It's a pilot program where if any student or any adult, anybody goes to pull a pull station that is not authorized to do so, the cameras automatically zoom in and alert pops up. So we're able to see who is at the pull station and address. Oh, the fire alarm. If you, pull station is the fire alarms in the hallway. If somebody pulls one intentionally or unintentionally, right away on cell phones, we'll get a notice pop up, zoom in on the person who's touching the alarm. And that is one of the capabilities that we're piloting right now with Intralogic. As well as we have the opportunity to pilot, when you, when you show your license at a school, we could run that license to a national database or we could do license plate scans. There's multiple opportunities that we have partnered with this company to pilot some of this software. So under the guidance of Mr. Polanski, he'll analyze some of these features and we'll determine which ones we'll pilot. And, um, that's all I. Okay.
Next slide.
Next slide. That's all we can know either. They pulled that out. Facilities and capital. Yeah, my little. Okay. Technologies, we just sort of finished. And facilities and capital. When we hear door hardening, one of the recommendations, and it's been this way for years with school safety, is to keep the classroom doors locked at all times, as well as have the ability to lock the doors from the inside if they're not locked. So some of our buildings have original doors and we're going through a process and two of our primary schools are replacing, they call it hardening the door, replacing all the doors that are original to the building. That project is already in the way, in fact, it's a secret resolution that's on the CBI board meeting. We are using our hundred thousand dollar project to accomplish that, which means that we'll get pull stations back next year doing that project as well as making those doors more, more stable. Security vestibules, that's something that we also have been planning with some guys in primary buildings. This summer, Jefferson will be getting, as these projects have to go to the state, then they can take anywhere from eight months to a year and a half to get approved. So though we say we're going to start putting the security vestibules in the primary buildings, it takes time. Fortunately, our Jefferson project was approved for the summer. Currently, out of the state waiting approval is Woodhull as well as Southwell. So these are projects that we keep, we're always thinking security and ways to make our students safe and our staff safe as well as our families and community. Okay, security staff and protocol. We have increased one security guard who's in training right now. We're going to review the deployment of our guards among our buildings that have guards to determine whether we're going to shift or we deploy. That's one of the things we're looking at. We do have, as I said, the one point of entry egress. The other ability that we could possibly have where you see entry, well, one point of entry egress, the optimal solution would be you only come in one door and go out one door. So sometimes people wonder why we don't have multiple doors in the building opening, because that's not a safe way to conduct business. You should have a single point of entry as well as a single point of exit. So that is what we do in our research right now. But we mentioned again, the entry control systems. There is some software that we are looking at and hopefully to pilot, where right now employees enter with swipe cards or fobs. There is a way where an administrator push a button and disable that, no entry building. So if there's a technical emergency that we don't want employees coming into the building and using this right to gain access, there's a way to shut that down. That's another software that we're looking into as well. And then electronic surveillance, which would be our cameras, obviously. About a year and a half ago, we added to all of the buildings, the video monitor that is at the reader station. So when somebody comes to the building and they want to get in, they push a button, their picture is seen by the reader inside the building and then they, they can have two-way communication with them and buzz that in. Those were added to every building about a year and a half ago. And then, of course, we have our visitor protocols, where visitors, as I said, come to the door, they look at the video, see who it is, do you have a meeting, as I do, with who. They allow you to gain entrance. Then you can say your license, they take your license number, you sign in and you sign out. Not only is that a safety measure for our students, it's a safety measure for our visitors. Because heaven forbid, at the time of an emergency, we need to know who's at our buildings. We need to know who to look for, who to look for somebody. So that's not just to protect our students and our staff, it's to protect our visitors as well. We always need to know at all times who are in our buildings. And then the staff and student training drills that we do. I'm sure you hear about your children doing lots of drills as well as staff and people that we do. We try and drill every type of drill. The more you drill, the more scientific nature it becomes and the less fear is associated with that drill or with that incident. It becomes, people kind of know exactly what's expected of them. Now, is every, is it going to be unique and different? Yes. You can never drill for exactly what will happen. But we should be drill and understand terminology and the expectations. For example, when you hear a building's going into a lockdown, that means whatever is, the threat is on the outside and we don't want anybody coming in. So we don't allow anybody to be coming in, just a lockdown, keep everybody out. Nobody enters the building. Then you have a shelter in place. If your child or friend says they're in a shelter in place today, that means there's something going on in one part of the building and we need to move everybody to another part of the building. So say, heaven forbid, a fire broke out in one of the buildings or a roof collapsed and it started flooding. Then we really relocate all the students and staff to another area of the building where they would be supervised, while we contain that other situation, we shelter them in place until we either determine if we want to go back to business or do we just leave the children home. That's what a shelter in place is. Then you have a holding place. A holding place is where, a holding place is called a school building. Teachers can go on teaching inside the classroom. You just cannot go out in the hall. The example of why it's called a holding place is if you have a medical emergency or you have somebody in the hallway, a teacher, and the medical team, you need to deck that. You don't want anybody in the hallway competing in a car. So we call a holding place, nobody leaves, you look at the bell rings, nobody leaves until that is released, so that whatever's going on in the hallways can be contained and, you know, we're not going to compete with any medical assistance or whatever, whatever information it is. But teachers can still teach. Students can be moving about the classroom, you just cannot leave. And then we have the lockdown. The lockdown is where the threat is inside the building. So if people used to interchange, oh, we went into lockdown, it's a lockdown, but you were really drilling. but you were really drilling a lockdown, it's very different. So lockdown, the threat is inside the building. And these are all drills that our administrators, our staff and our students are practicing every year. There's also evacuation drills. We do that right before Thanksgiving. But it's just, the whole idea is that evacuation drills, we need to leave the premises. So we do in every single one of our building plans have a location where, if we have to leave this building and walk the students or bus the students to an alternate location, that location is in the plan and that's the evacuation drill to practice, everybody leaving the building and going to an alternate location. So those are the types of drills that are, are taking place. I'm sorry. The automated lockdown, that's a very advanced technology that's out there that we also will be looking into. Where at any point in time, the principal can run a single button, initiate a lockdown. meaning doors will automatically close and lock. Obviously very sophisticated, but that is subject now that is also available. Is it working? Let's see, we've got...
School district on Long Island will get a good look at anyone who pulls a fire alarm. Its technology could have helped police in Florida identify the Stoneman Douglas High School gunman even sooner.
Alright, Jen Goldberg has a story from Huntington.
Security cameras focused on fire alarm pull stations. The latest pilot program put forth in one Long Island district to keep schools safe.
And nothing that we sell or anyone else is gonna sell is gonna stop an active shooter situation. But we're trying to speed up the process.
Florida high school shooter Nicholas Cruz created mass chaos last week after he pulled the fire alarm to interrupt the lockdown protocol. The move caused confusion as students and staff filled the halls, initially thinking it was a drill or a real fire, until gunfire erupted. Lee Mandell, CEO of video surveillance company Intrologic Solutions, set up the system in Huntington. He says pull station surveillance can save valuable time while getting rid of guesswork. So if a person activates the pull station, cameras pop up real time so security could determine if it's a credible threat or if it's an actual fire alarm.
We've seen that the typical scenario is the person's coming in the building, they either have a mask on, they're covering themselves, or they have a bag or they're carrying something.
Huntington school superintendent James Polanski says dozens of cameras in the district have been repositioned.
And we have forty-six hundred students and over a thousand staff members in this district and I take it as, as my responsibility before anything else to make sure that they are safe and secure.
Safety and security when seconds matter. In Huntington, Long Island, Jody Goldberg, Fox 5 News.
Okay, so again, this is, um, one of the technologies that we are piloting. And we are hoping to partner with Intrologic to pilot additional. And what I mean by piloting, we're not paying for it, we're providing our tech. So we will work with them, get it going, but we guys, you know, this is not going to have, um, any tax or fines at this point. These are pilot programs and we need to pilot this rule because they keep the check out, which is also a nice plus for us. Thank you for the word.
Okay, to continue, just a couple of things that, that were emphasized before. Communication. Mrs. Ackerman mentioned, uh, common language. It's critical. We had a conversation amongst ourselves about changing up the drills so that there was no complacency and so that there was no information possibly leaking out about how these types of drills are conducted so that somebody could, could actually use that information to do harm. But the whole idea behind the drills and behind communications in general, not only in Huntington but throughout the state, is to use that common language. And we are also, as Mrs. Ackerman mentioned, sharing our, our plans from top to bottom with local law enforcement and with the New York State Police Department. So it's very important that they have information that's common because they're addressing the needs of seven hundred school districts throughout New York State. Our building plans are very specific with respect to in-school communications. There is a chain of command, there is somebody in a central role, there are people on the periphery, on the perimeter that are in, in other roles, but everybody needs to know what they need to do. And this comes with, this comes with educating staff, it comes with educating each other so that there is no, uh, there is no shortcoming. God forbid something damaging occur. If something happens in one building, and I'll give you an example today. We lost power at Jack Abrams for about ten minutes due to an accident on Route 110. They thought it was gonna be out for about an hour and a half, it ended up being thankfully about ten minutes. But it's important that the communication, either from me or somebody at the central level, go from here to the other buildings because there will be questions asked of our principals and, and other administrators at the various other buildings. They should be able to answer those questions without hesitation or reservation. Neighboring districts. Tomorrow morning, I have ten superintendents from all of our, our town of Huntington. The Huntington Smithtown Cluster is meeting in my conference room. The only agenda item tomorrow is school safety and security and how we communicate with each other within and among districts and how we are going to address some of the concerns that are out there at this point based on the Parkland tragedy. So we are not working in a vacuum in Huntington, we are sharing ideas. Uh, we are communicating, we are communicating with each other, we are communicating with local law enforcement together to make sure that we are on the same page and addressing things in the right way. Mentioned law enforcement, there's a lot of communication going on. The Suffolk County Police Department has been very responsive uh, in situations that are much less significant than what, what, what we've seen in places like Columbine, Sandy Hook, Parkland. Uh, they are certainly on the same page as we are in terms of making sure that we have immediate responses and, and also information from them as to how we can help them better do their jobs. And it's also important in this day, in day and age of technology that if we are in proactive or reactive mode, if there's something that needs to get out there and, and my goal is to be as communicative with this community as possible, answering individual questions and also making sure that information gets out there on an accurate basis. If we don't communicate it, it's gonna be communicated regardless and it's going to be communicated for all intents and purposes incorrectly unless we step in and tell people exactly what's happening. And it all, sometimes it'll, it'll allay concerns, sometimes it will add to them, but at least people will have accurate information. And I use today as an example, it was something very simple, rectified very easily. School power goes out, our buildings go into automatic lockout. Nobody can get in or out unless the door is open and we're not gonna do that until that power goes back on uh, unless it's a specific circumstance that we're okay with. But it's important at that point that all parents of children in that building be communicated with in case a child goes home and tries to describe what happened, him or herself, and doesn't have it a hundred percent accurately. As importantly, oops. Right order here. As importantly as anything else, and one of the things that we take pride in, in Huntington is prevention. And not just prevention in terms of trying to think of or plan for every contingency, which we do regardless, but educating our kids, educating our staff, trying to build, build well-rounded school and community citizens that understand the value and, and, and respect needed in a school community. And that goes right to school climate and relationships. And I can speak to some of the work that has been done throughout the district, certainly at the primary and elementary level with respect to respectful interactions and anti-bullying programs, onto a climate survey and responsiveness at the high school level. Relationships is what we pride, our, pride our existence on and building those relationships can have a drastically positive impact on school climate in general. One of the things that they have said about this, this, uh, this, this individual in Parkland is that he was disconnected and a lot of warning signs were missed prior to that may have led to preventing that incident altogether. And like I said, it's very difficult to prevent or, or consider every possible contingency. But one of the things that I think our staff, our buildings in general are very, are very good at identifying potential problems and acting in the most proactive sense possible. Uh, those relationships cannot be minimized. And along the same line of thinking, uh, the high school, and I shared this data with the board in a recent, in, in a recent update, school suspensions, discipline of, of a very punitive nature. There, there is a place for it and there are times where it has to be done, but there are other ways that consequences can be issued. And along with school climate improvements, using a restorative justice program where the punishment more appropriately fits the crime and it's a learning experience as opposed to, uh, telling a student they can't be in school for a couple of days. And often regardless of what the, the issue was that caused the suspension, if they're not in school, they could be at home doing the same thing they got suspended for and not learning, not being educated. That's not a productive situation, it certainly doesn't contribute to a positive school climate. Uh, we have actually reduced our school suspensions at the high school level by fifty percent same time last year, based on how this program is used and our interact, our interactions and use of the Huntington Youth Bureau, the youth court process. Over the past couple of years, and, and the board knows this, this was highlighted at a number of legislative events, money has not been particularly abundant, but we have spent money. We have used resources to increase our student support staffing. We have added a social worker, we have added a psychologist, we have added a guidance counselor. These are not the first things you think of because they are not necessarily teaching kids in a classroom, but their services are absolutely indispensable. And listen, kids have issues. My own kids have issues. Everybody's kids have issues. Some of them are more significant than others, but it's not always the child that you think of that has the issues that may have them. It may be a perfectly, what looks to you like a well-rounded, a well-rounded, perfectly, um, situated student who's having a bad day that needs to talk to somebody. We need to have that staff available there to give them that hand. And again, contributing, going back to that positive school climate. There's a lot of things that were mentioned in the prior slides that could also be considered preventive in nature. But talking about education, talking about a positive environment, talking about an environment where kids want to help each other, where, where kids want to help staff and staff wants to help kids, it doesn't get any better than that. And, and that is, that is our greatest asset at this point and it cannot be minimized. And just in closing, and I've had this conversation with a number of parents this week. I've been in communication with a couple of parents who have some, some very significant talents and experiences with very destructive situations in other parts of the country and have been parts of things that, that, uh, nobody should be a part of. Just to reemphasize that safety and security, for anybody who knows what Maslow's hierarchy is, before you can worry about the higher order needs and putting the next set of great courses in place or the extracurriculars, the clubs, the activities. If we can't keep students and staff safe in our buildings, none of the other things matter. And while perfection may be difficult to reach, we do take it very seriously and, and regard it as the most important of basic needs because we want the other stuff to matter. If, if our kids come to school every day feeling safe and secure and understanding that, that this is the best place they can be, they then feel comfortable and, and actually can, can enjoyably take advantage of all the opportunities that are available to them. And again, ongoing planning and review, this is an ongoing process. Unfortunately, an incident like this makes everybody think twice. The media is all over this and not that I blame them. Uh, but the, the bottom line is, every school district right now is looking at their plans, is reconsidering their, their security process, is looking at, at, at how relationships are built within buildings. Because we are forty-six hundred kids strong, we have nearly a thousand staff members, as I mentioned in that video. We, we want this to be a place where people are comfortable, where people are not concerned. And unfortunately, an incident like this can, can have us questioning everything. We have good things in place, we're gonna continue to put more things in place that make students feel comfortable, that make students feel safe, but also make them feel welcome in their school environments. So there it is in a, uh, in a concise fashion. Does the board have any questions?
I have one or two.
Okay.
Where do we get the data from for areas that are in need of improvement when we're doing the drills? Like where does that data glean from?
Typically, when a drill is conducted, we will have somebody on site that has a different type of, of position or know-how than we do. Our school resource officer or somebody else from the second precinct is often present when these drills are conducted. So they can say, hey, um, you gotta make sure that the doorway windows are covered. Uh, hey, these blinds need to be closed because they are overlooking a courtyard. There is typically somebody there that can look at every fine detail and suggest places where things need to be improved. That troubleshooting is a very important part of the process. And, and again, when kids know it's, when kids know it's a drill, even when staff knows it's a drill, it's very easy to become complacent, so sometimes these things have to be conducted in a more impromptu manner where they don't necessarily know exactly what time they're going to be occurring. Um, but it's, I've seen them occur, particularly in the primary buildings where it can be a little intimidating for the kids when they've got to do a, a lockdown and move into the corner of a classroom and, and kind of cower away from a window. But these are the kinds of things that, that, you know, unfortunately are on the agenda in this day and age.
And also, as part of the drilling procedure, is, uh, a meeting is required after a drill. So if staff members notice that some door was broken or this wasn't working, they could use all that feedback in the info. School building committee gets together and you, how the drill might need to be improved. Do we have any areas that we fixed up, put in fuel, whatever. So there is that after every drill, how do we go, what happened, what do we need, what do we learn, what do we, you know? So there's a lot of discussion after that. Still, it's a whole...
That's the whole, so that, is anything gone over with the students after? Do, are the teachers required to review with the students what they could have done better, what they, what they did well?
Generally, what should have happened is yes. You should be at the end of the drill saying, okay, you see what we did, this is why we did it. And, you know, next time, be quieter. Because when, you know, during a lockdown, you shouldn't be talking because someone's trying to find a way to call. You know, you know, silence your cell phones. You know, I heard seven cell phones right during the drill and I have that. So it is a triple down.
And how long do they stay on lockdown for in a drill generally?
It, it depends, but really, normally with a lockdown, we wait until the building's clear. Like there's everyone's radio, I'm like, okay, fourth wing's clear, first floor's clear. Once everyone's ready to say that they're clear, then we release the lockdown to see how long it took. Um, you know, sometimes your drills take longer than others. With some of the other drills, they have to provide information, the spreadsheet they, they give me, how long it took, how many kids were in attendance that day, what was the weather like, if it was a, a dangerous outside or was it a ventilation drill? So there's a lot of variables that are involved down.
The other question I had was, is there any input provided from our existing security staff or teachers? Or is there a mechanism for them to provide you input, uh, when there's not a drill? When they maybe they identify a potential problem that exists? Maybe it's a broken door knob in a room. Maybe it's, uh, you know, oh, I see, so the security noticed some kids going off campus and sneaking back in through a back door because a buddy's letting them in. Um, is there any kind of mechanism for, again, security admin staff to report to the safety committee? Hey, can somebody look into this? I see this is a potential problem.
I think that's individual by building because I know, you know, each building has somebody who's kind of in charge of the, the, the safety committee and they would have to, they would report it to that safety committee. Individual who's in charge of that, you know, I noticed this, I noticed that. Someone's locking the door with the lock, it's even on, it's, you know, those types of things. Again, well, obviously broken doors, you know, broken pieces of, like, uh... There's supposed to be ongoing conversation among the people who, in a building, you know, each building knows who's in, on its committee and who each other's information, right? And those that are discussed at that time.
You know, I had seen a technology, I forget where I saw it, just in one of the articles I was reading. And it was a, a way for students to be able to use their phone. It was an app, I think, and if they had concerns or if they had overheard somebody mention that they had a weapon on them or that they could, they could actually shoot off a text. I think it ends up being anonymous, but it would send the tip to somebody, to a specific point person, you know, who's in charge of security and safety. I don't know the cost of something like that, I don't even, I didn't, you know, I just read a small amount about it. But it might be something else to look into because obviously the kids are hearing a lot of things in the hallways. You know, in that situation with Florida, if those red flags had gotten to the right person, I mean, it's so frustrating and infuriating to think about it because there was enough evidence with that particular case where somebody somewhere should have said, you know what, this is concerning and, and this kid should be, you know, on our radar, basically. And I just think that the kids may be a really valuable resource in that respect.
Fortunately with the case in, in Parkland, forget the kids for a minute, I mean, the...
Yeah, no, you had...
Government officials had information that, that they, they didn't react to. And, and listen, it's very easy to play Monday morning quarterback in a situation like this from, from my end saying, well, that should have happened, that should have happened. Um, I will tell you that it's a, it's a promising technology and in conversations that, that I've had with, with other superintendents, administrators, that technology has not worked as well as they would have liked it to. Not all have tried it, in fact, it's, it's not as widespread as it probably should be at this point because there are so many false reports and it does have the possibility, and I don't want to say this too loudly, but of moving people into... and I don't want to say this too loudly, but of moving people into a place that they shouldn't be while
Right. No, I agree with that, like a Big Brother kind of a thing. I mean, you don't want, certainly, we've, I think, really
As a diversion.
Oh, as a diversion, too.
That's my point.
I got you. Because I was going to say, we've fostered this lovely community, and, and I really do agree with you. I think our greatest asset is that the kids at the high school, there's a level of trust and respect, and I really think there's a culture there that's a wonderful thing, and I wouldn't want to see something like that take away from that. In the same regard, I kind of feel like if that information had gotten to somebody in the school district, as opposed to like some anonymous police agent somewhere who was able to write it off really easily, if it had gone to somebody within the school who knows these kids, maybe things would have ended differently. I mean, like you said, Monday morning quarterbacking, you know, for whatever it's worth, but maybe it's something else to look into.
Absolutely.
Kathy, is there a timeline on the InterLogic pilot programs?
No, there isn't. It, it depends on how we think of the software, and if it works out, and then we see how we like the, the software. So we're doing one component at a time. This is the best way to, it has to be adjusted to software at a time. So we're doing one component at a time. Right now, we're working on full station software, and then to decide which direction we like us to go on to them.
Did you apply for that, or did they reach out to us?
No, they reached out to us, because believe it or not, when we, they're in the law school, InterLogic's a very popular security company, but when we were considering getting our bids and visiting locations, their software really wasn't that powerful. So our high school security has been working with a software developer to improve their software. So we've gotten their product to where it's much more powerful. So in return, they're saying, well, we have this stuff we want to try, and we have this stuff that we want to try, because we actually gave them a better product. So that's kind of how that works.
One, one of the drawbacks is, something like this happens, and, and this is what drives me crazy, you have vendors who are just seizing the moment, and they will come at you with everything that you need, so we have to vet very carefully, and, and obviously, pick and choose, and use avenues like piloting, like smart schools, bond funding, to pull in things that are going to, to make sense for
Just because somebody offers something doesn't
Right.
Right.
And not to say that that's what this company is doing, but I, I can just tell you, the volume of email that I am receiving over the past two weeks, from anybody and everybody selling this and that related to school security, you would not believe how many there are. And they've got to be looked at carefully, and you've got to fully vet the company that that's coming your way. And we, you know, we do have relationships through my association, vendors that, that work with a lot of school districts in Suffolk, and Nassau and Suffolk, and, and you know who you're working with, you're not, you're not going to go out and blindly purchase something from somebody you don't know.
And do you plan on using this new equipment as part of our drilling process?
At the, the full station?
Yes.
I have, I, I could be making an effort, and that we, we made an effort, because we just volunteered, so we need to, to get it working, and then work with the high school administration and security, see how they want to drill it.
Right.
And that will be the next step.
I don't know if it would necessarily be part of a drill, and I was a little concerned when that piece played, because it, you know, it's another safety measure in place, that you don't necessarily want anybody who's looking to, to do the wrong thing trying to circumvent. But obviously, if you think back, what this, what this person did in Florida is, he caused the chaos, and then seized the moment during the chaos, and they, they were, they were not prepared to handle that specific situation. We are better prepared to handle that situation, but, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot more situations that, that can happen than, you know, we can think of with the number of technologies that are out there. And it's unnerving. It is, is most definitely unnerving.
And that's a lot of times, out of the development, it's, it comes from the administration and staff of the buildings. What would you like to have that could help you to stop that? And they'll make suggestions, it would be really great if we had just the ability that somebody goes to the phone, and sees who it is, because now you're back doing, back through the building, and interrupting, you know, school, and finding it. So lots of times, what we, the products that we work supply, or what the buildings really need, is they're the ones that are
I want to personally thank you for the presentation, because I know there've been a lot of questions out there, and it's unfortunate that we're having this conversation, but it is the era that we live in today. And I think that, no matter what we do, or how we plan, if somebody wants to cause harm, it's unfortunate that they're going to do it. But you guys have been very zealous and diligent in, in finding different solutions for potential problems, and I just want to thank you personally.
No, Ed, thank you for, for thanking, and it, like I said, there's no greater priority, and I don't want to come across as, as cliche under any circumstance, but I have two kids, I have 4,600 kids here that I look at as, as, as my surrogates, and we all do, and parents in this district are entrusting their kids to us on a daily basis, and, and I, I need them to understand that we are taking this extremely seriously. I did get a communication this morning by our soon-to-be hefe honoree, and he pointed out to me something I didn't know, and, you know what, it's just nice to hear sometimes, and he happens to be very good with, with security measures, and if I have a conference to, to send somebody to, I typically look at him, because he's been, he's been focused on, on this type of thing for a long time. But he had shared with me this morning that there were two neighboring districts that I won't name, that in response to this, had just talked about, you got to keep those classroom doors locked. It's such a simple thing, and that goes back to, in, in certain respects, the hardening of the doors. And, and I know it's not easy sometimes for teachers to do that, when the weather gets a little bit warmer, but here's a perfect example, just a locked door can serve as a deterrent, and if that door is locked, somebody jiggles the handle, can't get in, they keep moving. And if every door is locked, they keep moving and keep moving, it takes time, and the response is going to be immediate enough, where maybe you can, you can get through that event before something tragic happens. Simple, but not immaterial.
Are there areas, I'm sorry, are there areas in the, any of the buildings that can be locked out from other areas in the building? You don't have to answer that if you think it's a safety issue.
No, but that's one of the things, I think Kathy mentioned that before, that, that automated lockdown system, there is a system out there through InterLogic, where it's one, one button pushed, and everything is locked.
Locks all the doors, all the exteriors, all at once?
Yes.
And you think of that, you, you think of movies where that happens, and the types of situations that, that lead to the need for that, and it's, again, it's uncomfortable, but it's, it's a technology that we're looking into.
I saw some questions out in the world about devices, simple devices, mechanical devices, that can be put, kept in a classroom, and put on a door, like a
Yeah, underneath that door.
Barricaded door easily. Is that something we've ever looked at? Or, I know if the door's locked, but this is to keep it from being able to be pushed in.
And there, we've still got to meet building code, so it depends on what that device is.
They're not things that are installed. It would be something that would be
Slides in.
It slides under, and then it shoots out from the side, so that it, have you seen it on
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about, and I think there are pieces of, of that, that, that we could, we could in fact, look into without violating code.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Right on to budget?
Yes.
No, that's okay, I'm just going to back out, that's all.
Kathy, on yours? I'm going to have to knock, thank you.
And the unfortunate thing is, we are talking about anything that has a cost attached to it at this point, during a year, a budget planning process that is about as difficult as I've experienced since I got here seven years ago. Okay, so we're looking tonight at, we have our first budget draft in place, that's actually posted publicly for people to look at, so we're going to go over those numbers to a certain degree, and we're going to look at the central administration and transportation codes specifically. So just some review from last week, and I'm going to move as quickly as I can, so please stop me with questions. I know you will. Tax levy limit, we talked about this at the last meeting, that our limit in absolute dollars is 108,108.24, and that represents a 3.14% increase over the current year's limit. Why is that 3.14% as high as it is for the coming year? CPI, the CPI is at 2%, it was actually 2.13%, and the cap is at 2, so that's unusual, that is actually a, a number we haven't seen in a couple of years. Our tax-based growth factor, which reflects the property tax growth within the Huntington School District community, it's about a 0.6% increase from the current year to next year, which is fairly high for most districts in this area, so that contributed to a little bit, in terms of raising that limit, and also recall that we have 566,420 carryover, we were under the limit by that much for the current year, we do get to carry that over for 1718. Goes into the calculation, you know, we can't pick and choose what we put in the calculation, we have to put every item in there and submit to the comptroller before March 1st.
Yes, you're done.
Okay, we're done, thank you. And also recall that, that 3.14% this year represents the highest we can raise the tax levy for purposes of a simple majority vote. If the board decides to adopt a levy of 108,108.25, that will require a 60% voter approval throughout the community. I would not suggest a tax levy of 108,108.25. Okay. Was everybody with me on that number? That's $1 more than, okay.
Oh, you'd want us to laugh?
Well, just acknowledge that.
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
826 is okay, though.
And if I got it, they got it.
All right, this is the tax levy limit calculation, you saw it at the last meeting, just presenting it again, it is available, it is online, is in every presentation up to date, shows you how that, that 3.14% and the 108,108.24 was calculated. And looking at that number in the lower right, almost 3.3 million over the current year's tax levy. So that's not an insignificant number. All right, so where are we in terms of our current budget draft? There are your 1718 numbers. The tax levy limit numbers are on the right-hand side, and that middle column, or that third column, is where our draft exists today. And the significant number here is that tax levy of 110,741,191. Now, the way we, the way we, we put this together, we have had, starting back in October, we have had meetings with every budget manager in this district, and that means principals, that means directors, that means certain people who have responsibility for even small pieces of the budget. We denied some requests, but this includes just about everything that they felt they needed for the coming school year. Notice that that middle column, I don't think we've dealt with a number that much higher than the levy limit for a couple of years now. The other assumption we have built into the current draft is that the assessed value in the community will remain constant from this year to next year. That is not going to change the levy, but it will certainly change the tax rate, and that needs to be considered by the board. So we just carried that levy over from 1718 to 1819. That middle column, again, is where we are right, right now. There will be some work done between now and budget adoption in April. So with that middle column in place, we are talking about a budget-to-budget change of over $6 million. Obviously, that's not where we are going to land, but that's where it exists right now. That's a budget-to-budget increase of 4.82%. That is not going to fly. In the levy limit column, just simply that 3.14% will take that budget, bring it up three point, just over 3.4 million, that in itself is a 2.73 increase over the current year's budget. Also not insignificant. I should mention that that 3.14% at the last chief's meeting, again, meeting with the 18 Western Suffolk superintendents, went around the table and threw out their tax levy limit numbers. I thought we were on the high end, we're probably at about the median, and that is because a lot of districts have just floated bond issues, and the fact that they have an enormous amount of debt service just hitting the books, their capital tax levy spiked their, their tax levy limits beyond where it's, it's safe to be. You know, one very close, a district very close by was at over 4.25%. We're a lot in the 389, 37 area, a lot of those types of numbers coming out. Our number is what it is because of our growth factor and the carryover, we do not have a capital tax levy included, because our debt service is actually lower than our building aid. And we've taken a lot of pride in reducing debt to the point where it's almost nothing.
In that situation, will their debt then work in the next year?
The next year, they're not going to be able to use that debt service, because it's, if it's the first year, the bond is on the books, it's only an addition. The next year, they have to subtract the previous years and add the current year, so it's more of a wash, so it's really
Now, whatever they've added in, they still have to
If they decide to go to the tax levy limit, yeah, it puts them in a, in a little bit of a predicament. Okay, so our, we haven't looked at a line in red like this for the past couple of years at the onset of the process. Right now, we are 2.64 million and change over where, where we would be if we were at the tax levy limit. I am not suggesting that the board adopt at, above, or below at this point, these are just concrete numbers for you to look at, consider, and work with. So that is, that's a lot of work that needs to be done, and it is concerning. It is concerning during a time where we have a lot of needs that need to be addressed, educationally, security-related, there's just a lot that needs to be thought about here. And what does this look like in terms of a tax rate? Recall that the rate is calculated by taking the levy, dividing it by the assessed valuation, and again, recall that we kept the assessed value flat, so that number, that percentage on the bottom there in both columns reflects, no increase or decrease to the assessed valuation. For example, if the board decided today, nope, we need to reduce the projected assessed value by $100,000 for next year, because we project a property tax-based decline, that tax rate percentage is going to go up in both of those columns. So just considering, it's not going to change the levy, but where that, where that, where that assessed value falls will impact people's tax bills specifically. And again, our draft budget at this point, tax rate percent change from this year to next, 5.65%, it's not going to fly. Tax levy there is 3.13%, not 3.14%, that is a rounding issue, it is the 3.14% that we're allowed to raise. Again, the difference between the 728 divided by the 230, 238 in the 1718 column, it's, for all intents and purposes, we're falling in between 3.13% and 3.14%, but same number. Okay, so just looking at things, I'm going to move through this as quickly as I can. Non-discretionary cost categories, these are our primary cost drivers, these are the things that we have to pay, and don't really have a choice. And that does put us in a predicament in a year like this, or a year upcoming like this. Salary and contractual obligations, for example, contractual obligation, health insurance. Put your fingers in your ears, Tom. Pension contributions, TRS and ERS. This year, or I'm sorry, for next year, TRS, the employer contribution is going up for the first time in a number of years, that's mitigated a little bit by the ERS decline, but not enough. Insurance premiums go up, debt service, it's about the same, and that's due to an amortization schedule, but again, we are not taking on more debt, so it's not that significant in the overall scheme of things. BOSI's charges, utilities, we got to turn the lights on, special education, IDEA, you know, 611 and 619 grants don't cover everything, and transportation. Okay, let's take a look at some of these categories, salary and contractual obligations, our salaries in every unit, all bargaining units, overtime, sick personal leaves, health insurance, stipends, substitutes. Right now there, we are looking at a 6.97% increase from this year to next in the current budget draft. Salaries are a part of that, but the biggest chunk of that 6.97%, I don't have to tell you, Tom, it is health insurance. All right, ice ship raise their rates. We do have some alternatives that we can possibly look at in the, in the contract, in the teacher's contract at this point, and we have some work to do there, but I do want to make it clear that salaries are not the driver there, it is, it is almost solely ice shipping, you'll see that more specifically in the upcoming presentation on March 12th. Pension contributions. I need to remind that we did not create the teacher retirement system, it is there for a reason, it was put in place years ago, it's a legislative construct, it is not us paying retirees, basically what we do is, we are obligated to pay a percentage of our current certificated employee salaries into the TRS. The system actually predicted a less-than-anticipated rate of return on their investments, and thus raised the rate for next year from 9.8% to 10.63%. And in Huntington, I'll tell you, a point from 9.8 to 10.8 is about $1 million. So what you're going to see here is about $800,000 in TRS expenses added into the coming year's budget. ERS, a little bit of relief here, 200 and something thousand from 15.3 this year to 14.9 next year, and this covers all of our civil service, non-certificated employees. Most of that 875, in fact, all of it is, is TRS. It would be over 800,000 if ERS was It would be over eight hundred thousand if ERS was flat. ERS kind of brought it down just a little bit if you're looking at the two collectively. General insurance, the list is there, I won't read it. These are standard insurance premiums, does not include employee benefit insurances, health, dental, life, but those are the things that we have to, we have to purchase or keep up to date on an annual basis. And again, we are looking at about a three percent increase. And for the most part, it's a projection based on what we're hearing from nicer, from our pupil benefits, which pays certain student insurances, catastrophic insurance, tank insurance, cyber insurance, we're expecting about a three percent increase. All right, debt service. We have one bond left on the books, little less than one point four million to go. I could have taken off the EPC, but I do want to make it clear and it's good for the public to see that it's something we paid off, I think, two years ago at this point, so there is no debt service left there. And we are talking about a two point five, three percent increase. Now, why is that happening if the bond is maturing and we are actually reducing interest on an annual basis? The way the amortization schedule works, the principal goes up each year until it's paid off. So we're, and it's not a lot of money in absolute dollars, but it is leading to a slight percentage increase from this year to next. BOSI's administrative and capital costs. As a component member of Western Suffolk BOSI's, we pay a prorated share of BOSI's administrative, salary, pension, fringe benefits, and operational costs. These numbers are given to us by BOSI's. There is an increase expected, almost twenty one thousand dollars, six point oh seven percent. And again, that is handed to us by BOSI's, that is an actual at this point. Things we obviously must have, fuel, electricity, gas, water, we'll sometimes go back and forth between oil and gas depending on prices, water, telephone, sewage. The increase here is primarily anticipated in the form of electricity. Special, special education, out-of-district student tuitions, these can be quite expensive. Story about upstate district, small district, had one student move in who attended an out-of-district places that was costly, almost bankrupted the entire district. Not to say these students don't need and deserve the services that we can provide, but we have to look at every possible option, contracted services. And we do also pay for kids attending, I'll use St. Pat's as an example. We may have kids from South Huntington or Elwood or Cold Spring Harbor attending St. Pat's. We will pay special education costs for them and be reimbursed by those districts, so that cost is actually a pass-through and a break-even. But if we have a student Huntington resident who attends St. Anthony's High School, South Huntington would pay that expense and we would have to pay them back, so this is kind of a wash regardless of how you look at it. And, and again, we are looking at anticipated here, and it may not amount to this, it could amount to more, tuitions and possibly grant reductions coming into play here. And that remains to be seen. We have two large grants that we apply for every year, six eleven and six nineteen. They are federal grants that are, that are administered by the state and we have to look very carefully at those, obviously maximizing efficiencies and still making sure students get the services they need, very important. Interesting year where if you're looking at the increases, and this is telling, the increases in these mandated expenses are actually over one hundred percent of the entire budget increase in that draft. Recall that there was about a six point one million budget-to-budget increase. This is six point four million. I'm going to ask the, I'm going to play teacher. What does that tell you about discretionary costs? They're going down. So we are doing everything we can to maintain program. Now, we're looking, we're going to look back at health insurance and we're, we're going to look to possibly trim that a little bit. There's only so far that we can go, but we're, we're in a place right now where if the mandated costs are more than the increase and we've already pulled back on certain things that are discretionary, it's not a place we want to be. And what do I mean by discretionary? All the things that kids go to school for, learning, staffing, textbooks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Capital improvements may be in there, a lot of that is addressed through the reserve, but obviously some smaller things can be incorporated into the general fund budget. And just to give you a sense, we are no different than, than any other district in terms of how these pie charts look in general, but if you look at our function budgets, fortunately over half, I'd like it to be more than that, going to the instructional program, but look at the chunk, and that includes salaries, but look at the chunk employee benefits. General support is more the central administrative level, transportation is not cheap, and the other two are relatively insignificant in the overall scheme of things. Looking at it by object, salaries and benefits. And again, these are, this is not to take away from the important work that people do here, but that is, this is not a Huntington issue, this is what school districts face on an annual basis. We are talking about, and we're talking about over seventy percent going in that direction. And the instructional budget by object, again, showing salaries and benefits at the top of the chart. So this year, what are our cost drivers? There are salary and stipend increases across the units. They are much less significant than the health insurance costs at this point. Increased TRS, I mentioned, that's about eight hundred thousand. Transportation, we are obligated to increase transportation by the percentage of the regional CPI, not the national like the tax levy limit, but the regional CPI. Utility costs, I mentioned electricity, absolute dollar amount, is not as significant as some of the others, but it's still there in terms of savings. Debt service reductions, not saving us a lot of money, but it's not, certainly not contributing to a problem that we're, we're facing this year. Certain aidable costs shifted to BOSI's. That saves us because we may spend two dollars more on something purchasing it through BOSI's, but based on a forty percent aid ratio, we may get a boatload of that back during the following year and, and years beyond that. So that does benefit us. And I didn't put down here, I should have, ERS going down is also going to save us about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that should be on this list as well. It's a graph you've seen before, and it's a graph that doesn't make anybody happy, but it shows what a budget looks like. That's the top line. The assessed value has been sort of friendly over the past couple of years, but has remained relatively flat. The most telling line is state aid has not been, you can see that, that increased toward the end of the line, but it's certainly not increasing in the same manner as, as budgets and mandated, and mandated costs. And in terms of enrollment, in terms of at least a fifteen to sixteen-year history, relatively flat, we are at a little bit less than forty-six hundred at this point, a little bit less than where we were at this point last year or in September of last year. All right, so let's start to pick apart the codes and, and I will fly through this. Stop me if, if you have questions. Here are the things that are included in the one thousand series. And there are, there are several cost centers, we break them down with, with, they're a little bit antiquated, but it helps us to organize. So general support looks at a lot of the things that are, that are controlled in central office location. So what we are looking at here is about a four point six six percent, five hundred and forty, almost five hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase from this year to next. And on a specific item basis, let's start with the Board of Education. I've multiplied all of your salaries by twenty.
Love those bonuses.
For those that don't know, zero times twenty is zero. Not to read them to you, but they were the things that go into the Board of Education, ten-ten code, and you can see it's not a lot of money. We have not, and the reason for the sixteen seventeen actual being so low, and just in case, I mean, I know Barry is going to a very important conference next week, that estimated actual may come down, there's still plenty of time in the year. The highest I've seen the Board of Education number, not to waste too much time on a forty-four hundred dollar expense is when we all went to the NISP conference in, in the city. And it is coming back to the city next year and it's certainly a worthwhile venture. District clerk. Take a look at the items here, board docs is included here. And we are looking at a whopping four hundred and thirty dollar increase. Not even something that needs to be spoken about, but there you see it. District meetings. The budget vote has changed in the past couple of years from the levers, the old reliable, to the electronic voting machines. And we are looking at no increase from X year to Y year. We're still just trying to settle in. We have to rent the machines, we have to purchase the ballots, we have to go through the, we're, we're trying to purchase as, as many ballots as we need with a little cushion, but not as much cushion where we're buying this paper that we can't use from one year to the next. Chief School Administrator's Office. Mind you, this is not just one person, there is, one of the, the major issues here and the reason that the fifty-four ninety-nine is in there, it's conferences that I've gone to, memberships that I have that I did not have during the past couple of years. And Joanne is constantly telling me that there are certain supply items that need to increase because she's scrambling around stealing things from other offices and I believe she got caught at some point next week, uh, last week. All right, Business Office, again, going through the, the items here without reading them to you. Kathy's office is also overseeing purchasing, payroll, benefits, accounts payable. There's a number of staff members in that office that might not come to mind if you're automatically thinking about what goes on in the Business Office. There is a considerable increase this year, and this is a transition year. I think you recall that at the last meeting, we finally brought in the Assistant Business Manager and that's going to allow us to pull back a little bit on some of the expensive contracted services that have worked very well for us, Booksmart being one of them, state aid planning being another. So that number may come down, that number may come down as we plan further throughout this budget development process, but that's why you see that increase. It's primarily, not that that's all one person, but that's probably about half of it right there and then maintaining some of the other services for at least the period of transition. Auditing, there are the requirements. We have an external auditor in the form of Cullen and Donowski. We have an internal auditor in the form of Sheehan and Company and R.S. Abrams is our claims auditor. And all of these services tend to, tend to be around the same or may be slightly increased from year to year, but we're looking at a, a flat budget at this point in that area. Treasurer, Jill Miranda, no relation to Joanne. And really a very small increase there and then that really reflects the two percent that we build in for our non-contractual employees on an annual basis. Legal services, general and labor, some districts use two different companies for one and/or the other. We use the same company for both. And again, we are expecting a slight increase in the retainer from this year to next year.
That they set?
They asked for it and then we can negotiate.
Gotcha.
My question to them every time I get a, every time I make a phone call is, is that on the retainer? And I question photocopy expenses on the bills. I just want you to know that I'm not just taking a bill and signing off on it. Joanne, Kathy, and others, other administrators know that I am picking these bills apart to the hilt, to the point where my middle name has, in the Gersio office, it has probably an F at the beginning of it.
Billable hours.
Don't get me started with that. All right, Human Resources. Let's take a look at the items here. And we are really trying to expand our recruiting horizons, goal number nine. We actually have Chris, Chris is here, Chris and Judy Moroff are going to a Latino careers fair next week. And we are looking again to broaden our horizons and extend ourselves into places where not a lot of school districts go and they really should. And that's part of the conversation that was held during my meeting a couple of weeks ago, but these recruiting fairs do come with somewhat of a cost. I mean, they're not going to break the bank, but every little bit counts. So that's part of this. There's a salary piece in there from our current HR administrator to the last HR administrator worth every penny, I might add, and conferences as well for a new administrator. Records management. Here is an area where we were rolling over a number for a couple of years and really were not using it. This has to do with, I believe, Iron Mountain and a lot of the storage of records. We are working off Schedule ED one, a lot of things are done electronically that were done in paper form in the past, hence the fifty-five percent decrease. I like the percentage, the absolute dollar value is not going to help us that much. Public information. There are some things that we have to consider this year. I know that Jim Hoops and Andy Marlowe have done considerable work on website accessibility and trying to do that in-house as opposed to bringing, that's another, all of a sudden you find out that your websites have to be ADA compliant and the vultures are, are out there in terms of this company, that company, looking to, to do all these things that need to be done to become compliant. Well, there is a tool out there that shows how compliant a website actually is and the work that we did personally and in-house put us in a much better place and we've got to keep an eye on this, but put us in a much better place than some of those that are working through some of the bigger companies at this point.
That seminar that we took on, that was really eye-opening.
For example, you'll, there's certain colors that have to be used and contrast that has to be used. Every, and we're not, well, there's certain PDFs that have to be adjusted, we'll leave it at that, but things like the board audio, there has to be a closed captioning option involved. And our biggest problem, because our website is so extensive and there's so many pieces to it, I mean, if you have a district with a cruddy website and only a couple of things that need to be looked at, it makes it a lot easier than something that's updated and just really reconstructed on a daily basis. But I have to say that...
I might be able to find the materials from the thing if you want to look at it. It was, it was complicated, yeah.
Yeah, and...
And there are people out there trying to exploit it as well.
Oh, of course.
Not just, not just what Jim was saying about trying to do that.
It's unfortunate. And not to say that, that accessibility is not important, but that therein lies part of the problem, that people prey on these things when, when, you know, people are at their, their lowest financial points. Operation, eight buildings, custodial staff, equipment, custodial supplies, utilities. And that increase there, two point five two percent reflects an added custodial position in this building, increased number of kids. That fifty-five thousand to supplement the high school library grant is in here as well. The electric rate increase is in here and about twenty thousand in contracted services are built in here as well, increase from this year to next. Maintenance, so our buildings and grounds, repairs, contracted services and certain supplies. And a big chunk of that expense, absolute dollar amount, not that high, but asbestos abatements. And we also have a maintenance mechanic position that's currently unfilled that we are looking to fill. Security, again, we can address some of these needs, particularly the cameras with the Smart Schools Bond Act. And the increase you see there are contractual salary increases. We are looking at one and a half guards at this point over what we have the current year. And something that, that doesn't add a lot, but that needs to be considered is the extra school day. And if you have hourly employees, you've got to take those people, and Kathy did yeoman's work here, almost doing this, all doing it to the penny and taking those hourly employees and calculating the cost of that extra day. Central data processing, state reporting mandates, payroll, e-school, E-Rate filing. And in that twenty-two seven oh three, again, not high absolute dollar amount, but percentage is, is somewhat high. Couple of BOSI's increases that are aidable, Integra Edge, e-school, Ames Web, board docs, we do a lot of our, our work in terms of paying for those services through BOSI's, regions and NICE's lat scoring and any other scanning that needs to be done.
So what part of that would you say is making that seven point six eight?
A lot of that is, is the BOSI services increases, but it's misleading because we're going to get a chunk of that back in the form of BOSI's aid. And that, I don't want to get in a soapbox because time is obviously not something you want me to use too much of, but that potential two percent cap on BOSI's expenses, if these BOSI's expenditures are capped and they have, these things have to be paid for anyway, where do you go? They go into, they, they go into the tax levy and it's really not a productive situation. And that's the big argument with these potential two percent caps on BOSI's, on transportation, on building aid, that if the aid is not going to pay for this stuff and it's needed, well, taxpayers are going to pay for it, it's not helping anyone. General insurance, there's the list. And again, this is that three percent increase that you saw a couple of slides back, primarily nicer, pupil benefits, catastrophic insurance, tank and cyber insurance. Primarily nicer, pupil benefits, catastrophic insurance, tank and cyber insurance. School Association Dues, these things are built into the 1920 Code, flat from one year to the next. You saw this in a previous slide as well. That's the operational, administrative, and capital costs. Same slide you saw before. And those rates are determined by BOSI's. And once again, the summative slides. So you're looking at 4.66% at this moment in time. And that brings us to the other focus tonight, and that's the 5,000 Series Transportation. We have been working with one-year contracts with Huntington Coach since the year I started, where we had that two-year in place, which was not as productive as the one-year. We have 53 large buses, 87 vans, and they work in packages. So you don't have, sometimes questions come up, well, why is that high school bus so low in terms of its ridership? Well, that bus may also be doing a Woodhull run and a Southdown run, and the bus may be filled for those two latter parts of the package. So you've got to look at the whole package as opposed to looking at one component of it. Our transportation consultant may help us in this regard. In fact, I expect him to. His savings is not yet, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Mrs. Acker, his savings is not yet incorporated into our budget number. And there's a timing issue with that as well.
Is it a program that he uses to figure out the savings, or is it just his anecdotal experience? Like, how does that work?
Well, we do have, we do have routing software, which he has access to, and that's TransFinder. And Huntington Coach has been, has been pretty good to us, but we've just got to work together with them and with him to look very carefully at how that software pulls things, pulls things out. We don't want a student riding on a bus for more than 40 minutes. Even that is too much, and that includes not only our schools, but also kids who attend private schools within district boundaries. So that would be his primary software access. So we are looking at over 5,000 eligible students. That number is actually down from last year. Eight district schools, 39 private parochial, 25 special needs. And a lot of, a lot of those schools may have only one or two students going to them. And if that's the case, just so you know, we will talk to other districts and look at possible ways where we can share the expense of a bus and end up with more than one on that bus, so we're paying a loan for an expensive van for one or two students. So we are looking at about a 3.35% increase overall. This is a small piece of it, 5510. This is our transportation office, and I will tell you, and I think I've mentioned it to you before, coming from a district that had its own fleet, this is a lot easier when you're dealing with contracted services for a number of different reasons. The office here does not cost us that much at all. We had a transition in staff over the past couple of years. That's why that, that, that small increase really does reflect just pieces of salary. But the real expense, obviously, for us is in contracted transportation, regular service, special education transport, athletics, music, late buses, daily rentals, field trips, et cetera. And we are looking at a 3.73 increase, and that reflects just about a 2% contractual increase and some additional aids and monitors on buses. We've kind of, and we may not, we may cut back on that, but we just want to make sure we have enough based on IEP needs.
That doesn't, that doesn't add up to, I'm sorry, X. That doesn't add up to much, right? The aids being on the buses?
Depends on how many. But it's, you're, we pay, it adds up. It does add up.
Because just going back into the, you know, it's, it's that whole piece of what, you know, we're talking about with the school safety thing and being able to identify, it's just a little bit of a layer, a layer that might be a-
One of the reasons that they're actually built in, and that 3.73 is, has, I'm sorry, is as high as it is. That can be brought down a little bit. And again, we've, we've got to have aids in certain situations where it's mandated, and we want aid in other situations because they're, they're eyes and ears on buses.
Exactly, yeah.
Buses are an extension of the school district, so if something happens on a bus, it's role intense and purpose is treated like something that happens in a classroom.
Jim, I think I ask you this every other year, but in your experience, you've seen it both sides, owning the buses and renting the buses, you still think it's more cost-effective to rent the buses?
I, I do believe that the cost will be somewhat close once everything is settled. But if we were to automatically, or, I mean, you'd have to do it somewhat gradually, but if you're going from all contracted to even a part owning, you've got to have a garage, you've got to hire mechanics, you need more staff to do maintenance, et cetera. There is a significant initial outlay that would certainly hit during budget year number one. And I will also tell you that in terms of staff in general, if there's a problem with the driver, I will pick up the phone personally. I will call Huntington Coach and say, I do not want that driver in Huntington ever again. They can drive anywhere else that Huntington Coach drives. Sometimes they'll push back a little bit, and other times they'll just say, okay, that's no problem. I could not do that if we were hiring our own bus drivers who had Section 75 rights. And I don't do that arbitrarily and capriciously, but if a parent calls me with a concern and it's a valid concern, I'm not taking any chances with, with kids on buses. That, that's a benefit as well.
And also risk level, I would think, too. I mean, it's a lot more risk to be in charge-
Oh, absolutely. And I will tell you, and one of the things that Huntington Coach provides for us is they have, and you can, you can do this search on your own, and I've shared it with you, they have among the highest safety ratings as a school bus company can have locally and beyond. And they are responsive. They are responsive. And they know this area. They work with primarily districts from, you know, Huntington, South Huntington, Syosset, just a bunch of local districts, and they get to know these routes very well. Okay. This is interesting because we've put money in this code for things like Greenkill, although the costs really don't exist, athletic tournaments and playoffs. We haven't not paid from this code recently, nor the Marching Band. It's incorporated into the other code, therefore, we've done this.
Which did we mention, how successful those two great trips were, when we did our initial announcements at the beginning of the meeting? Marching Band and Greenkill.
Yeah. Yep, we're still doing them, but we're not, we're not paying.
No, 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 I'm saying we didn't acknowledge it. We didn't acknowledge it. This one's Greenkill.
Oh, yeah, well, we can acknowledge it now because it's up on the screen. Greenkill Kids had a great time, and I heard from staff members today, as a matter of fact, I'm observing one of them this week, who said it was the best, you get to know the kids in a whole different light. It's a bonding experience. The kids had a great time. Was Marching Band mentioned, the trip to Orlando?
I don't remember.
Jen did.
And the High Steppers were not far away from them as well, doing, doing their thing as well as they always do it. Okay, and there's your summary slide again. So just some reminders here. You saw these numbers before. We are currently sitting at a 4.82% budget-to-budget increase and a 5.65% estimated tax rate increase. This is our start point. This is not where we're going to land. I don't want to spend too much time on a contingency budget, but it's not a place we want to be because we would definitely have to cut into things that we don't want to cut into to reduce beyond equipment and other $5.2-plus million. And just to highlight the upcoming sessions, on Monday, the 12th, we'll break down the 9,000 codes and talk about Capital Plan with some added, added pieces to that presentation. Kathy and I believe George are going to work on the backend of that Capital presentation, and you'll have to look at some of the things that you're looking at priority-wise, and I'll certainly share what I'd recommend. That discussion is certainly, certainly worthy of being held and can start next week. And then we have Instruction Staffing on the 26th. We push back the revenue presentation, just assuming that the governor and the legislators are going to be arguing over what's going to happen with State Aid, giving us as much time as possible to build in actual revenue numbers, adoption, budget hearing, and election. That was pretty quick.
That was well done.
Well done. Now you just got to find a couple of million dollars later.
Yeah, yep. Questions, comments? Okay.
He must be proved.
How many slides was that?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. But who's counting?
It was Ryan.
You did, Miss Lou. I agree.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions, or we're all good?
We're all good.
Okay. Nice. Thank you.
Moving, thank you. Moving on to Board Policy 3270, Community Use of Facilities.
Okay, so this we discussed at the last meeting. Also attached there, we've updated the fee schedules to incorporate that little extra in terms of air conditioning maintenance. We think we have it in a good place at this point. And we've also updated the policy to reflect the new levels as opposed to the, the prior codes that were, that were in there. All right, so really, the only change in policy, we struck the date that the fee schedules were approved in 2012, if you see that. We don't need to put a date in there because whatever you've approved is going to be by default, and the three highlighted levels.
Yeah.
So basically, they go into play right away, right?
Yep. I have it, and again, I have it in there as a first read. If you'd like to finalize it, you may, or the next meeting is, is coming up a couple of weeks down the road, so it's up to you.
I think we can-
Let me get a-
It's kind of like a second read.
It's almost like a second read.
Yeah.
I mean, we've kind of been through it to second, this is more of a second read. So can I get a motion to approve 3270, Community Use of School Facilities? As a final read?
Motion.
Jen, and a second.
I'll second it.
Barry?
Can I ask one quick question?
Ask, we're going to questions now.
One question. Does it, I didn't notice, does it say in here somewhere that it's, you know, only applies to, obviously to contracts that are signed after this day, right? I mean, anyone who's using the facility after this day is paying according to the old schedule? Because they signed a contract? Do you know what I'm saying?
In other words, when does the-
So say I was using the-
The fee, the fee schedule would be based on when the application was submitted?
Right.
Because that, that's really when the payment should be made.
Payment is made when they get bills, right?
Correct. But the billing, the billing, what I'm saying is the billing is generally following the application approval.
So it'll be-
Right. So if they already submitted their contract here-
I believe so. Unless I'm-
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
That's a good question.
So if, if, it is, it's a good question, I want to make sure I have it right. So if somebody put in for use on-
Next week.
February 25th-
Right.
And it was approved on February 25th, it would be the old fee schedule.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And that's not in conflict with what the policy says here, beginning with the 2012, 2013 school year.
That's why it was struck though, wasn't it?
No, that, that's just, that's when the policy was, was initially, actually, I've got to change the date on it, too. That's when the policy was initially revised, with beginning then, it continues now. We got rid of the April 2, 2012. Mrs. Miranda, just make-
That's just saying that, that, that starting that year, we were, we allowed people to use it.
No, we started charging.
We started charging.
That's, that's when the last set of fee schedules was approved.
Right. Do you think you need to change that?
I don't think we need to. I think we just got rid of the on April 2, 2012, and if we put in a new date, that just means every time, or anytime you update a schedule, you've got to change that date. Why not just leave a generic? We just need to change the year on top of the policy.
And Jim, we do not waive the fee, correct?
Up at the top in the blue.
For anybody.
You have given me the administrative discretion to do that, and I have used it sparingly and in situations where I believe it's really warranted, where you have try CYA coming in and servicing 100% of our kids in ways that nobody else could.
Right.
I can't waive the custodial and security fees if it's during off-hours and there's no other event here that constitutes a gift of public funds, but I don't have to charge them. I mean, they're not asking to use the air conditioning in the auditorium, they're asking to use classrooms. I can waive the fee there. They have no real source of income.
Okay.
And like I said, I promise I'm not abusing that, and I'm trying to do it with consistency.
Anybody else? No? Have a motion in a second. All in favor? That is everyone. Moving on to Board Policy 5741, Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus Drivers and Other Safety Sensitive Employees.
Yeah, there's quite a bit here, and this, this does reflect, you know, it's, a lot of it is semantic, and it does reflect the fact that we do contract out our transportation services.
Yeah.
And this is all in, in alignment with the current U.S. Department of Health and Human Services mandatory guidelines, so that, that's prompting the change in the policy. It's not us deciding we need to do this, it's guidelines change, we're going to follow them.
I have a question about this, but should we get a motion in a second, or is this a first read?
Are we approving this, or is it a first read? It's a first read.
Oh, so can I just ask one question?
You still want to get it, you still got to approve the first read, so I-
Okay, so I've got a motion to approve, this is a first read.
Motion.
Barry, and a second. Xavier? Questions?
Okay, thank you. You know, the safety sensitive employees, are they like aids that ride on the bus, or are they also potentially driving the bus?
It could be anybody who has a connection to that, that bus, so it's, or somebody that's not necessarily on a bus in general, but possibly involved in moving our students from point A to B in accordance with district policy.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or are you still going through it?
That's good, that's one question.
Good. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor of first read approval? That is everybody. Okay, moving on to Board Policy 5670, Records Management.
And there's a regulation here as well, attached. It's not something that the board needs to approve, but I think it comes as a package deal. Two things here to mention, records are now in, in many ways electronic where they weren't 20 years ago, so this revision reflects electronic records in a much more 2018-type situation. And the other piece of this is that Joanne and I had a conversation, she is the District Records Management Officer. She doesn't have to be, and many of the times that she has a task that needs to be performed, she will tap into Kim Zelman, who is in the Business Office, and it basically takes out must-be district clerk and gives us the option of assigning this to anybody who's got the direct responsibility that we, that's the regulation more than anything else. So see, everything about district clerk taken out and put back in more generically as a records management officer, which could be any number of people who have confidential attached to their name.
So can I get a motion to approve 5670, Records Management, as a first read?
Motion.
Jen, and a second would be Christine.
I'll second it.
Sorry. Anybody have any questions? No? All in favor?
Joanne, can you just make a note that the regulation from 2017 needs to be changed to 2018? Thank you.
Okay, we now have Board Policy 7222, Diploma or Credential Options for Students with Disabilities.
Okay, this is, reflects something called Zachary's Law, which we have kind of been abide, we've kind of, we've been abiding by it anyway. If a student with disabilities, with an IEP, earned a credential as opposed to a diploma, I guess that there were some districts in New York State that were denying them or not allowing them to walk during the graduation ceremony. We have always done that. Somebody in some district in New York called the district out on that, and next thing, a bill and a law now saying you have to allow them to walk. We've never had an issue with that, but now let's, let's put it in policy. There is also some reflection in here, I believe, and I don't know if the language had to change, but there is a new program in place that is still open for public comment, superintendent's determination, appeal-related, certain requirements met that are below the standard requirements, but if certain requirements are met, I would have the ability upon recommendation from the high school to sign off on that student's graduation with a local diploma.
Upon application, a request of the parent, I think it is, right?
Well, it could be initiated by the parent, but the high school would have to review there are certain requirements that have to be met, can't just be a parent request. There's certain region scores between 52 and 54 on certain regions that, that have to be met, and there's an attendance requirement in there as well.
Could I get a motion to approve first read for Policy 7222?
Motion.
Barry and Christine. Any questions?
No, the only thing I wanted to say about it was, I, I think that there's a movement in the, with the commentary period about, if I'm not mistaken, that this doesn't work retroactively, so there are students who put it, oh, not the walking thing, sorry, the superintendent's term.
I don't think the language actually had to change for that, just the fact that, that it's out there. out there, I think that the language was generic enough that it would accommodate it either way, that's why it's not in the description and the public content area, in the content area there. This is mostly, if you look through it, more about the Zachary's Law.
The graduation, yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor, first read approval? That's everybody. I raised my hand, sorry.
I voted for her.
Thanks. Thank you.
You're a good cop, Christine.
Okay. Board policy 7320, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances for students.
No, you missed one.
No, you missed.
Oh, I did.
Suspension of students.
She jumped on me. 7313, suspension of students.
Okay, this has been revised to pull in, and I know Diana Rich did a yeoman's work in reviewing this, to pull in certain requirements and also things that we need to do in terms of manifestation for students with disabilities, and it also importantly incorporates advisement to students and parents about appeal rights, which we are very careful to alert them to, but we want to make sure it's in policy as well, so that it's there if we need it.
So can I get a motion for first read approval of policy 7313, suspension of students?
I'll make the motion.
Emily, and a second.
I'll second it.
Christine, anybody have any questions?
I do. Under suspension, five school days or less around the second paragraph, it's the one in blue, it says when the principal, the suspending authority must provide the student with notice of the charged misconduct, and the language to me seems to suggest that if the student is denying the misconduct, that's when we provide them with an explanation of the basis for the suspension. Do we do that nonetheless, or only when that you...
We do it nonetheless, because Ed Law 3214, one of the things it requires of us is an informal conference with the parent, we cannot act on a suspension until that conference is offered. A parent can deny, I don't want to do it, but that's typically scheduled immediately after the suspend, it's really a proposed suspension, not a suspension, until that conference is held. A lot of parents won't bother with it, but they are entitled to it, and anything that's presented to them at that point is considered by the administrator or the building principal, and they would certainly be entitled to any explanation. Doesn't mean...
Does that notice generally get delivered straight home, like...
It actually costs us because we...
In hand, by hand.
Kind of hand-delivered.
And further down, it talks about the notice will provide, the description, the notice.
That's why, that's why restorative justice is quite important, because it does save us, not only builds climate, but it also saves us in terms of the other stuff.
That's a better option.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, if nobody else has any other questions, can I get a motion to approve first reads?
Yep, here we go. Are we motioning?
Wait, are we motioning or voting?
See, there's too much.
It's contagious.
Okay, so I get a motion to approve the first read of policy 7313.
Motion.
Barry, and a second.
We already had the motion.
I know, we did this already.
We just devote.
Right, so I have a motion to approve.
First read.
Do we have it now, ask Joanna?
Yeah, you have the motion already, yeah, so now we just vote.
Devote.
The first read. You asked for a motion.
Motion to approve. Right, that's what I...
Devote.
No, all in favor.
All in favor, thank you. See, it's getting late, folks. Too many policies.
Yeah.
Policy committee.
Okay.
Stand it, sorry.
Policy 7320.
Okay, this is quick, recall, policy committee people, that I had the old policy with all the old changes as well as the new changes, I took out all the old changes that had already been approved, and that leaves us with basically one line, adding misuse of vitamin supplements, herbs, and similar substances, which is recommended by our attorneys and policy service. So it's a...
Yeah, I think that's a good change.
If you want a final approval of that, feel free.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to approve this as a final read?
Motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so that's Barry and Jen, anybody have any questions?
Why'd you take out "of education"? I'm just curious.
Huh?
Probably define the past board.
And I think in past policies, we're only referred to as...
Yeah, I think it was for consistency with other policies.
Yeah, I think so too.
This seems really to cover a lot of things that might not mean to cover.
What, the other similar substances?
No, like, I don't know, it says vitamins, and I'm thinking, like, what if you have a cough drop with vitamin C in it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Misuse.
Yeah.
Not use, but misuse.
Or misuse of prescription and over...
Counter-drug.
Unauthorized.
So, does a mother sending her kid in with a bag of cough drops that have vitamin C in it, is that authorized?
I don't think, I think that's a real thing.
It is.
That's a real thing.
I don't think that would ever draw any negative attention.
I think we went through this though.
Robitussin, you know what I mean, then maybe you're talking something concerning, but a cough drop.
Or bringing them to the chemistry lab.
Then I think we have a positive concern.
I don't think, I don't think a child bringing in a box of cough drops would be classified. It's not, I don't think, I know it would not be classified.
A misuse.
It's unauthorized, unauthorized, it's unauthorized use or misuse. That's not, if a child has a cough...
Right, that's unauthorized.
Particularly at the high school level, and it's over the counter, that's not something that's...
Okay, just turn it off.
Yep, that's a good question.
This conversation should be a footnote as a legislative intent of policy 7320.
There you go. You missed someone last year, look it up.
There you go.
There's one right there. Laura, you're article on it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's everyone.
Reel them in, Tom.
Start getting...
Not easy. Board policy 7580, dignity for all students.
Our policy, even though it wasn't that old, it was dated because the Vader form, which doesn't get as much attention in place as it used to, thank goodness, is now combined with the DASSA form, so they're both kind of completed together, and principals know exactly, and I'm not saying they like it, but they certainly know what they need to do here and are certainly very diligent at doing what they need to do, so it reflects both those forms, and also, as mentioned in that last line, highlights broader access to dignity act coordinator contact information, and importantly, DASSA training for non-instructional personnel.
Okay, so can I get a...
That is the proud dignity acts coordinator line in school.
Congratulations.
Get a motion to approve policy 7580 as a first read.
Motion.
Jen, and a second.
I'll second it.
Emily, any questions?
I just have one question. I thought that DASSA was like a pretty, that some form of it was instituted nationally, is that not correct?
Um, why do you have me questioning myself at this point? It is...
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, thank you.
Or do different states, do different states enforce it differently?
It's a state education law, so it is, the way, the way we, and they may have something similar, but it's...
I think it, every state must do it, but they do it in their own local manner. So like, in New Jersey, it's called HIP, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and yeah.
I just asked that because I had a conversation with a friend who lives in Colorado, there was an issue with her son, and I started saying, well, don't you have DASSA? And I was referring her to all that policy, they don't, they don't have anything like that.
There's also regulation, commission's regulation, that goes further in terms of telling us what to do in terms of implementation, that is definitely state-driven.
Okay.
So...
Yep.
I see we changed "which" for "that" several times, I've never known how to really use "which" or "that."
It's always "that," not "which."
At the next policy committee meeting, we're going to sit down for a half hour, I'll go through that with you.
Thanks.
Every few years, just change it to the other one.
So I have a motion and a second.
Focus, people.
All in favor?
It's first read, right?
First read, yes. Moving on to board policy 7582, student gender identity.
Okay, so this is something we've been, we've been looking at for some time, and there is guidance from New York State as far as how to address, just trying to get to the page here, oh, just also, while you're reviewing first read dignity act, just make sure not to overlook R and R1, there were two different regulations attached to it as well that have also been amended. Now, student gender identity in the past is probably considered under DASSA, but there are some things here that have become more prominent, and, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that we treat every student with respect and with dignity. This kind of addresses some of the things that students face when there is a gender identity concern on their part. This is not, this is a new policy, it is not something that has any redlining in it because it's all new, but it talks about some of the things that we currently do based on state guidelines and based on a common sense approach.
Yeah, it's respectful, I beg.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the first read of policy 7582?
I'll make the motion.
Christine, and a second.
I'll second it.
Emily, any questions?
I actually have a question, but it's sort of parallel to the policy, there was language that said it towards the end, it says, "The district will not restrict students' clothing or appearance on the basis of gender." And that made me think, don't we already kind of do that, though, with code of, not code, with the dress codes? Don't we outline in dress code how girls can dress a certain way, and boys can, you know what I mean? Like, don't we already...
If you look at that girl and boy as gender and not as anything other than that, that's not the intent.
No, I know what the intent is, I'm not saying I don't understand, but it speaks to me, that, then that speaks to a broader issue about what kind of messaging we are giving students in general about how they can and can't dress at school. Just saying, it's a thought that popped into my brain, just letting you know that, that we might want to think about going forward, because it's legitimate then.
I think, I know, I know what you're suggesting, and I think you're absolutely right, and I just want to reemphasize that I don't, and maybe that needs to be, I'm sure it needs to be looked at, but understand that that code was not there to, in any way, restrict somebody's expression of gender identity.
Okay.
It was just more about what's revealing and what's too revealing.
I just want to say, I think that it's fantastic that we have this policy, and it's, I know that we've been practicing, as you said, a lot of what's in this policy, I think having it on the books is really, really important, and I think it says something very important about the school district, what we've been talking about all night.
And I also want to just emphasize the fact, and it's, this is not just a high school issue, it can happen at any level, and things are looked at very carefully on a case-by-case basis, because what's comfortable for one may not be for another, and, you know, every student has a right to be comfortable, we'll leave it at that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor? That is everyone.
That wasn't too bad.
No.
That was one, two, three, four, it was eight policies.
They're all asleep, though.
Moving on to curriculum instruction and business.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry, and a second.
I'll second it.
Anyone abstaining?
Okay, Christine abstaining, and all in favor? That is everyone else. Moving on to personnel.
Asking for approval, personnel items on the schedule is 5, 6, 8, 11, 13, 15, 16, and 22.
So can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry, and a second.
Second it.
Christine, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That's everybody.
What can I say?
Any announcements?
Nope.
Okay, Ms. Zachary?
Okay, it's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, approve items I through Q on this evening's business agenda.
So can I get a...
Before you do that, can I just make a suggestion that you pull M1?
So I through Q, except M1.
You can either discuss and make a change, or just hold off until the next meeting if somebody jumps up.
Oh, that's right.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So start with everything.
It's upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through...
L?
Yep. On this evening's business agenda, and also items N through Q on this evening's business agenda.
Nope.
No?
Oh, not Q, N through P.
N through P.
N through P. So we're all good?
N through P on this evening's business agenda.
Yeah.
Entropy?
That's just what I was going to say.
Can I, can I get a motion to approve?
Yes.
Bill, and a second of Xavier, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That's everybody.
Should I make my announcements?
Now you want to, you want to make announcements, or you want to go back to...
Oh, that's all right, well, we can do that, let's go back first.
Does anybody want...
Or no?
Anybody want to, we can do that separately and then discuss it, if anybody wants to do it.
In other words, you're wondering if anybody wants to get up at 5:00 in the morning and open the doors for the election.
I wasn't going to go in your direction.
Over here.
You want to make a motion for...
Can I get a, can I get a motion to, what, discuss item M?
Just to...
Amend.
Amend.
Amend item M?
I'll make the motion.
Christine, and a second.[1611.32]